As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I hear your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Yeah.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yeah.
Mauro Hogan.
Yeah.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Brian Haas.
Yes.
Charles Gabron.
Yes.
Wonderful. Is there somebody else there? I can't see. Wayne, Wayne, you're online too?
And Adam's here.
Adam's fine.
Adam is there. Okay, sorry. I didn't, I know you were, but I wasn't sure if you were joining virtually. Sorry. Hi, Adam.
Hi.
This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, signed into law by Governor Haley on March 29, 2023. This Act continues to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the Chair as required by law. And I don't see any hands raised. Meeting materials along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available under the Maynard School website in the folder titled 2023-2024 Agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Public comments. The public comment agenda period is a devoted time for the public to hear, for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public comment period. Any person wishing to speak and make a virtual public comment may do so by signing up in advance up until the public comment agenda item at the link provided on the agenda. Please use your Zoom name to match so we are able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair as time allows. The Chair may consider allowing a person to comment a second time if it relates to a new topic under the committee's purview that has not been brought up. Email comments in advance up to the public comments agenda item at commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. You must state in the subject line, public comment, and include your first and last name and town to ensure that your comment is read. Comments read by the Chair will only be read for three minutes. If the comments submitted are longer, they will be cut off at the three minute mark. To ensure comments are able to be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 words. Comments exceeding 350 words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Comments for the public, for public records submitted after the public comments agenda item has passed can still be submitted before the end of the meeting by emailing them to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. I'm gonna skip the ground rules. I think we agree that we all are respectable and we know how to engage. So now, before I move on to, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order via roll call vote at 7:05. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yeah.
And Natasha Rivera. All right, we are. Now I just closed. All right. Public, speaking of public comments. Colleen, I didn't see any email. Do we? Okay. Okay. Urgent business, Superintendent Haas, do we have anything?
No urgent business.
Okay. Student representative report. I got your, we don't have someone here to to share it, right? Did we want to read it?
I can summarize if you want, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that would be helpful and we can add it to make sure to include it with with our, with our minutes as well.
Correct. So unfortunately, both of our people were spelled ill today. And also other meetings going on, school meetings tonight such as W A B M. So we're a little short on students, but they did a nice job of submitting student report. And they acknowledged several very positive happenings at the high school from the opening day assembly to the whiteout theme of the football games, to the color run, to they had their first advisory earlier today, pet ban. So of the eighth graders to the football game, so encouraging that connection between father and the high school continues. And it was good to see that. W A B M students did a presentation in the middle school trying to recruit new members. So again, really fostering that relationship between father and the high school and we're letting these kids get involved as early as possible. We are one of the few high schools that has an FCC licensed station, so that's really, that's key to us. And they acknowledged the Wi-Fi at Alumni Field and the W A B M webcam were set up to be able to livestream games, which is new for us this year. So very excited to have Adam here. He was part of that project as well. So to be Adam, Technology Department, and Steven and W A B M, a lot of just strong highlights to open the year. They had a couple, an area for attention, the homework policy, making sure that we're following that around holiday time. Specifically, September is very often, it always has several Jewish holidays in September and then we roll into a variety of holidays all year long. So really working to make sure everybody knows conversations continue about that. Clearly, they were disappointed about the bleachers because it's been an ongoing story, quite frankly, for most of our high school kids, students. That's been in their sights for years now. There's not new news here. They are, I think they're disappointed that it's not getting done sooner. They're excited to know that we're actually maybe progress. We'll talk about that later today, tonight. There's been some, we need to do some work on the student section, specifically the football games between the AMSA students and the Maynard High Schools. Even though we're on C T, they're not feeling well yet. They will. It just takes a. And the principals and the coaches and the athletic director, everybody's well aware of this communication between AMSA and Maynard High School. They're working on that proactive.
Can you give me an example? I mean, I've heard some things last year. Is it, is it getting worse or is it?
That it's worse. I think it's just, I mean, for lack of a better word, some of the kids sort of just aren't cognizant of the bounds. So they can come across kind of obnoxious, whether they're an AMSA student or a Maynard student or wherever they're from. That's just part of growing up and they're figuring that out, but they're rubbing people the wrong way right now. And I would be one or the other, but I'm not. But all the administration is well aware and working on that collectively from the AMSA and.
I mean, they do realize they play on the same team, right? So I'm just wondering where the combativeness is coming from, like they're actually playing against the other team, right?
Away was that the administration was telling them that they need to do positive cheers and not negative cheers. And so I don't know if that was the piece of it or not.
Okay, so like they were, they felt like they were being censored from their, their type of cheers they could do?
Yeah, that may be part of it and that's not what I heard. So.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like maybe there was some mean cheering going on.
All right, so we'll wait for the student reps to come back to maybe probe their, them a little bit more on the matter.
They are working really hard, I want to say, being compliant with my, all organizations in the state of my institution. They are not an organization to boss. They are very strict. They don't bend. They don't make exceptions. They want the sportsmanship that has been, that has come a long way for them. And that is, that's one of their tenets is being good sports, not only as athletes, players, but as spectators.
Oh, I was gonna say, I remember that one of the last year's football games, that there were some AMSA students. And again, they're on the same team, but there were some students, you know, in the audience. And our S I O was very, very good, but they, they were like right hands on. So this is not a new thing.
No, they're working on it.
Hello? I can't, I lost sound for a moment.
The administrators come to me and we just talked about this and I can't remember what the principal said, so I don't want to say the wrong thing.
I would say that last year they were there.
Okay.
So I would imagine that to keep things going, that they would be there. So.
And I, can I, can I just add one more thing before we move on to that? I guess what, as the conversations evolve and maybe we'll look forward to hearing more is, I would worry that some, they would try to segregate the groups. And there are several Maynard students in the AMSA group as well. So that would be a worry that we would further, you know, alienate or segregate them when they're really a good chunk of our Maynard residents as well.
And there's somebody that they are on the same team, so I will work.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Absolutely. There are date detectors. That's not a mystery. We got a grant, we put them in. Some of us might just attack me like them and some of them don't. But they do, they do have the desire to affect. And the, and the desire in, and that impact is that in the back there was two, they would set them off with other students feel safer in the back, so they are. Fairs, W A B M, the live stream playoffs and senior nights for sports this year. Progress, progress reports come out again from one. Senior privileges are likely to be effective at the progress report because this start of the year was that good. And that is awesome. That is amazing here and that is really kind of a consistent message. On high schools. Variety of superintendents, districts, and we are no exception in front of that day one. Friends and honor society members will get NHS privilege to the induction. Homecoming is coming up in November, so you can get shoes and presents. I'm giving you ample time.
Very well.
Okay, okay, somebody's silent.
And.
Sorry, I'm not really.
You're not even asking.
It's okay. I'm feeling tired. And finally, me has altered their dates to this come this month.
Yeah, I think we have to put it on our calendar, right? I think, Brian, you were just seeking confirmation. I don't know if we, I mean, if there's not really a lot of flexibility, I don't know what might make sense to just plan it as an ad meeting for the school committee for March 11th, right?
Yeah.
For now.
Okay, I think it can be whenever you need it to be. I'll get the specifics from my school committee, an official meeting. I don't get this specific time. I don't know that it isn't the traditional.
I think you had mentioned and it was it'd be in the evening. So if it would be not in the evening, yeah, that might be a little bit more tricky, I think, for folks.
It might be accommodated and they know.
Okay.
What's the purpose for them to just tell us whether we're doing a good job, like we managed it all or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's a very, it's part of their process. We named it the process, actually, we stick the process for other schools.
All right, so more to come, but for now, maybe we just put a hold on March 11th for the school committee.
Yes, I'll make more information in the report.
Great, thank you. And that was, that was it, right?
That's it.
Okay, so then I'm gonna leave the floor to you because now it's superintendent report.
I'm gonna bring that up for our audience, because I know Adam's here, he's pretty excited. I probably should let Adam go first, but I'll remind quickly so that we can then get to. I'm actually Charles, I might have been texting a little. Okay, just so you know, I mean, what I have in my report is kind of the same information you've seen in terms of what we can do. Did have a meeting. Yeah.
Okay, one for the, for the presentation itself?
Yep, we have a meeting Monday for the presentation, so we're really working to be very as for the town meeting, making sure that we have a presentation that we visited and we're streetlining it a little bit and making sure we've been able to answer one more opportunity for people to come and actually walk the school. We have the meeting tomorrow with the local calendars. So just, that's up and coming. We're working on childcare for the October 10 meeting. That's October 10th at 7:00 AM at the Father's School. And then election Tuesday, November 7th is all day and that's also with Father's. Bleachers, bleachers, bleachers. I'm pretty excited because it doesn't, it sounds like we may go back, we actually have not gone back, we have gone forward. We have a team on board. We have a timeline coming out. We have every project scope being created. We have designer R F Ts that have been out. We have designer selection committee being put together. It will have, and it does have already the O P M, school representation, school committee representation, parent representation and town representation. So that should be helpful in terms of identifying the lighting in the sense of we're getting accurate information from what does it really cost to build bleachers, whether it's timeline or bleachers. And we're lucky, quite frankly, that our O P M is college international. So some of the names we basically can see along the bleachers would be Phil Colombo, you know, from the Green Meadow Building Project and he, I think that works in our favor. He knows the community. He knows the facilities. He knows the sites. He knows the players in town and then one of the other key people will be back and his last name, we give me, I forget. Also been part of some of the Green Meadow Building Project as well. So he also knows Maynard. So to have somebody familiar with the town, I think is super helpful. And we are, you can see up there between just the steps that have been laid out in our first meeting. And the next big event is about the third bullet from the bottom, believe it or not, the last, like me, that designer selection committee. I think a couple. So I was, we are moving forward. That was something to be updated on that. There's not much more besides.
It looks like there's a couple of people, oops, sorry, I was just gonna try to. Hi, you have a question, Hillary?
Yeah, I know at one point it was thoughts that sort of have different levels of city for the plans. Are we like full fledged or are we committed at one point?
Nope, not committed at one point at this point. This is very much in its infancy. So this is them coming and looking and hiring designers. So we looked at bleachers. Only the press box that will have to be, that's not so specific. My head, and this is not part of the base plan, if you will. I would love to see restrooms and a concession stand because I think that's what most newer high schools have and they need to host events. And very few people have said to me, I really want to go to the, the. That just does that conversation of having that. But indeed, facilities, so having facilities and in my head, I kind of like a place like Truitt, right? That has the football field and the stadium around it and the laboratories and concession in a building that's, you know, like right there. All alternates. So there's no commitment to it's all or it's none or tiering. It's very much in cost analysis, site design.
So to follow up on that, will they come up with two or three plans? Like if you do this, this is how much it's going to cost if you add on.
Yeah, and they just. Alterately, alterately, and they will.
Yeah, I just also wanted to push shout out to Colleen because they have been working so hard on the Green Meadow Elementary School. In fact, I just mentioned it to Jerry Culver, the Chair of the Building Committee yesterday. It was, I think they're just doing an amazing job. So I'm really happy that they're, that they were hired to do this.
Well, do we know who's on? I don't have to tell in my head. I know the school committee.
Me for the school committee. Do we have the parent representative commit yet? I know that we had reached out.
I don't want to throw the name out there yet because I just, he just got the info. I spoke with him today. He was agreeable.
Oh, I can't hear you. I got muted all of a sudden.
I spoke to the parent that we spoke about. He's
Yeah.
Said to be, to be offered to be part of it. It's a matter of whether the schedule fits, so I don't want to announce.
Right.
Like, put it out there a little. They've been continuing over to once, looking at the member, one parent. School, so Mike Ariel will represent the school and the town will probably be Justin or Greg. I don't want to speak for them. We could have another person. I mean, there's not a set number. It's just, it's a finite committee, if you will. So right now, that's what we're at.
Yeah, I know when we've done like the, Mary's participated also, when we've done like the, the process to select vendors like for food service, they're not like super, super low, like you do have a very like, very one stakeholder, like a beach building or whatever, but usually not as big as like a whole like task force level. If I'm understanding, is that what we're envisioning similar to that? It's just really the interview committee to select them, right? I'm not envisioning, I'm gonna stay on this in any capacity once that interview process is wrapped, right?
Once the interviews are done and the team is hired, then we really rely on the O P M
Right.
Being informed and having the meeting, well, that would include coming to school committee and sort of meetings and keeping it a prime.
So I would look to the school committee if you all have questions in particular that you want me to really kind of dig at. I have a sense of what they are, but you know, it's a conversation. Please email me what they are and I can consolidate them myself and then make sure that I, you know, either share them with, with Brian or, you know, however that might be, just a larger community, how they might be factored into, you know, the interview process in some ways. That can you, can you all hear me?
Definitely.
Oh, my, okay. Does that sound, does that sound okay for everyone? I know everyone has questions and I just want to make sure that they're, they're heard in a way that I can relay them to everyone's point.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, Brian, back to you, bleachers.
And well, Max, oh, so excited. I struggled to introduce Dr. LeBron to go over all of our approved DESI grants to this date.
Thank you. So that's, brings our gifts. We don't, we can't, we can't live with them. We can't, we have to realize that just because we have, we have to come be the exact same every year. So we are pleased that we have received program approval for the, the following six grants. Title one for $165,000, $245,000. Title two A, $24,701, titled three, $13,729. The title four, $12,800. Idea, which is special education, $377,532. And early childhood spend, $8,001. And I'm gonna quickly tell you what each one is being used for. If we go to the next slide. First one is Title One. This actually is reduction of about $10,000 last year, which does have a still a clearly a lot, $165,000. The idea behind Title One is to make sure that all students that they receive a fair, high quality education in front of us. To try to narrow the achievement gap. So we are using that money to help our two literacy specialists, one at Father, one at Green Meadow. We are using $10,000 with a high quality professional development for, and meeting in math to really help teachers with strategies to help those students. Not $11,000, but supplies and materials and just the amount. We have two charges. What, what charge is, whenever you have just a grant and you pay a salary, 9% on average is charged to M T R S. Doesn't go to any individual. This is the charge you see with a large grant. That's a good deal of money, $11,520. And we're required by law to set aside a certain amount for homeless students, but by regulation, $3,952. And that is for these, we may have, but the spot where you transportation supplies and then you have actually 60 to identify its costs.
Charles, can I ask a question about this, this particular one about the M T R S? 9%, that's because we are funding salaries out of here. That's where that, right, that percentage. So if we happen to not fund, if we just had, you know, materials and whatnot, then, then that, that would not be a necessary piece, right? It's only, it's only imposed when there's salaries, correct?
That's correct. And we'll be talking about that a bit later when you see a very large grant.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Okay, Title Two A, I could come and go on with the next one. All of a sudden, it sounds like a very small grant, $24,701. This is not, this actually sounds like salaries, but it's not a stipend, it's a salary, it's like, saying something extra. We use for two different areas. One is for mental coordinators and the other is for literacy and app coaches. $12,000 each. That may not necessarily be the total cost, but we use to offset whatever the cost may be. $700 aside from supplies.
Boss, can I just ask where those positions are going to be?
The positions, those positions for mental coordinators on all three schools. And literacy and math, which is our, that.
Thank you.
Okay, Title Three, it's one of my favorite grants. This is only the second year we have Title Three. Title Three is our English learner grant. Not an awful lot of money, but we've been using it for a number of things. Title Three, we're required to use it three ways and we have to include all three ways. One way is for some instructional support for students. We're going to use that, that we're going to have a part-time para, part-time paraprofessional at the high school. Help with things that actually are obviously on the school day, such as the school, all sorts of things with with the needs for our growing number of students at the high school. It's a little different couple because they have some real needs, English language at the same time they have. That's offsetting that cost $6,000. The next thing is community reach out. We have a part-time family coordinator. He's doing a great job. He reaches out to families, every community, this, this home business calls, emails, and has been very helpful in setting up our L P A C. And the third thing that has to use is some professional development activities of self-advancement. So that's again, it's on a very tough thought, but it helps.
Just ask for future, for future. Um, I personally would love to have the, our new L P A C coordinator, family coordinator come in at some point.
Definitely.
For a long time.
Yeah, he loves to talk a little bit. He likes to talk more than I do. The, the Title Four, we're using that for special development. With our assessment, we've, we've got a couple of new assessment things that I have. The point is, it's not just the assessment, what do we do with assessment results helping teachers? Use assessment, sort of like a prescription. What does this mean? Students, this, what do we do? Should be very helpful. And we use over $12,000 for that. With the next grant, this is our director of services. I have a large one, $3,778, $530. This, once upon a time, we use this for salaries. And our auditor asked us to get away from that exactly because of the 9% that we were using. The next set of $300,000, that's a lot of money. So we use it for our district tuition costs. And we also set aside some of this money for our homeschool services. These are estimates, the best we can estimate. I always have a chance as the year goes on, I'll visit each for a minute. You don't get any more money. We can put it to categories. So I'll, by the way, all that money is, every one of these costs up to $2,000. Our last one is the small early childhood special education grant. It's, it's for us as the cost of one paraprofessional, just a fraction. us as the cost of one paraprofessional, just a fraction, well, about eight thousand dollars of the paraprofessionals. So, and that is paraprofessional, you don't have to, um, do a nine percent for the parent, because they don't go on the MTRS. So those are the grants, and we do, uh, the, uh, have to be acceptable, so it's, that's something.
Thank you, uh, Charles, um, the, the pair, um, the early, these are all non-competitive, these are our annual, right, recurring, right?
We have a new grant system, it's called GEMS, and it's supposed to be great, uh, it's our first time through. Um, we found it pretty, pretty helpful, we can't get the grant, uh, it automatically tells you if there is an error of any sort. Uh, it's been slower though, um, it's been faster writing them more slowly. We, uh, we, we got everything booked on, uh, the program, booked on August thirty-first, and the date was due September twelfth, so a couple weeks ahead of the game. Um, it was hard because we didn't receive right numbers, I don't have the numbers until the end of July. You know, some of it, we used to get them in June, which we make it a lot.
And my other question is, the, the grant for the early, um, childhood education, the two sixty-two, is that smaller than we usually get, I, or is it usually around that? Okay. Alright, does anyone else have any questions? I can't see Mary, um, Colin, I think I need to be zoomed out, I only can see Mauro and um, Hillary, and, oh, there's Elizabeth, there we go.
In the speeches.
Okay, sorry, yeah, I don't know, that's okay, I, I don't, um, thank you, um, so Mary, any, any questions, other questions?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And this is just one, you know, one piece, that's exactly.
They're pretty sure, it's just a little slow.
Okay, um. Elizabeth, anything?
Oh, same thing, Bravo, thank you very much.
Mauro?
Big, so, thank you very much.
Okay, um, Hillary?
So my question is, as I was reading, um, like Googling about Title One, it sounded, and things that I've heard politicians talk about is that that money is going to the low-income kids. Um, but then it seems like schools are actually just spending it on lower achieving motion map.
Well, I think, um, there's a lot, yeah, the title one. Once you get a bunch, we're supposed to pay that, you said, for, which?
Oh, that's okay.
So they, they are related, but it isn't, it isn't the, if, if it's too personal, the salary, after the low income, that's stupid.
Is that a choice or is that policy for the brand?
Any, anything else, Hillary? Okay, so it, it sounds like all, all of these are going to CAF Center two thousand, right? I'm just reading that correctly? Okay, so, um, I will make a motion that we accept and allocate the Title One Fund Code three oh five totaling one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Title Two A Fund for thirty-four thousand seven hundred and one dollar, Title Three Fun Code, oh, yeah.
Title One, Title Two had an error in the math and it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four seven oh one.
Not thirty-four.
Okay, alright, so let me amend, um, so Title One, so Title Two A is twenty-four seven oh one. Got it, okay, great. Title Three Fun Code one eighty is thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Title Four Fun Code three oh nine is for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, the IDEA Fun Code for, uh, two forty is for three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And the Early Education Sped Fun Code two sixty-two for eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. All to be allocated to CAF Center two thousand for instruction.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albora?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yeah.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yeah.
And Natasha Rivera, yes, motion carries. Thank you. And Brian, do we have anything, that's it for the superintendent report, right?
Yeah, I would request, um, Adam Steiner for the technology updates, actually, in person.
Okay.
On the screen, it looks like she remotely, we could have, uh, Dr. Steiner go first.
Okay, so without objection, I will say that we go ahead and that take the technology, um, update out of order, if that's okay with the committee? Alright, so no objections, um, Adam, the floor is yours, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Brian, for that. If Otis was here, then I would want to be here.
We want to get anything done.
Although I have discovered that Otis really likes little children, I think it's part of his training, so when he sees a big guy like him coming, not very excited. So, and I, um, apologize for saying it, it's just been a long day. Um, so I think Colleen is bringing up the slides, but I just wanted a chance to introduce you to the work that we do here. And then definitely time for any questions that you have. Um, I think the last time I was in a school committee meeting, may have been when Brian was first hired, so it's been a long time since that.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so you can go on to the next slide, Colin. Um, so this next slide is our mission, which is somewhat wordy, but we recognize as a technology department that our job is to support the overall mission of the school system. And so issues like equity, diversity, student engagement, student achievement, these are essential to our work as a technology department, uh, it's not about the tech, it's really about student learning and how to support that. And there are a lot of district goals, um, that tie into our work. Including, um, the emphasis on universal design for learning, which is a passion of mine, which is a way to use technology and other resources to help the needs of all of them. So in terms of the stuff, uh, Charles talked about all the money coming in, so this is where some of the money is going out. So we are beyond one-to-one now, we have more than one device student. Uh, because we have a phone book for every student, which we've been able to do, using funds related to COVID, um, as well as funds recovering from that, we also have iPads in some cases, especially for our younger students. Uh, so we have about fifteen hundred phone books in district name. Uh, we have new wireless access points in all of our schools, um, Fowler and Green Meadow, who just did this past year. Which provides a strong wireless signal in every classroom. We have about two hundred iPads, again, to supplement that, uh, one patient we're using at Green Meadow is Early Bird, which is a early child assessment tool, when it is designed with the iPad, that's one of those. We have projectors in every classroom, and, and for the first time, we have interactive panels in, um, several of our classrooms at Green Meadow and at Fowler. So these are basically giant smart boards, uh, smartphones that are attached to a wall. So you can use them, um, with apps like you would on an Android smartphone. The other exciting thing about these is that they allow up to twenty points of touch. So you can have multiple children up at the interactive board, moving things around, um, circling things at the same time. They're also super durable, and that was my first question, because, you know, they are an investment. But they really don't break, uh, they are incredibly durable. And so far, the reaction's been great, sorry, Colleen, it's still, we don't, sorry, no. So, uh, we have, we also support copiers, the phone system, which we're making a major upgrade this year, our network switches, door entry systems and some, some other things, definitely do that, remind you to worry.
No, I was trying to do something, sorry.
So we also support systems, I mean, more and more, everything in the school ties into the network, and so it ends up being technology-related, but these are some of the things that our student and email, um, which is Google and file sharing, apps. Clever, which is a way that allows us to, um, buy access to our student data, to applications that we embedded, without giving them too much access. It also allows our Green Meadow students to log into their phone book by just holding a mobile back. So it used to be they actually had to type in the username the same way our high school students do. And so especially for our technology class, they would spend half the class just trying to type the right keys, clever is going to break a dish of us, three years or so. Oh, you securely for managing the phone books, for filtering them, and also for teachers can push content to phone books in the classroom. Uh, we helped manage the library systems, uh, Destiny, uh, paging and Bell Systems, video security system. Uh, the door access to buildings, uh, the off system, which is also, we also use for photocopying. Food service, point-of-sale, website, of course, uh, we have a lot of virtual servers reduce our reliance on expensive hardware. And we are part of the Student Data Privacy Consortium, which is a group of districts that have gotten together and said to vendors, are they, you sign data privacy agreements for our kids, or none of us are agreed to do this, and there are, like, fifty districts or more in Massachusetts, including like, big ones like Cambridge. And so when, uh, a vendor wants to do business in Massachusetts, they pretty much have to agree. It's, you know, one of the areas that I really am concerned about is student data privacy protection, this is a good asset. Uh, to support all this, we have, uh, you know, a few elements in our network infrastructure, we have a one gig BIOS connection coming into Fowler, that's sort of our main internet connection. And then there's fiber running between each of the buildings, um, allowing the same speed really to get over to the high school and to Green Meadow. We also just got a backup Comcast connection that goes into MHS. Uh, we always had Comcast for free low-cost, going back forty years, that WAVM would use, but now we have a a speedy Comcast connection, so if there was ever an extended files outage for some reason, we would be able to flip a switch and get onto Comcast. Because you can imagine it sometimes during the year, especially during MCAT, if we lost internet access for two days, it could be totally disrupted, so this will give us a good backup. Firewalls to protect the network as well as. This is the staffing with department, which has stayed the same over the last several, uh, years, uh, in terms of the number, people have changed. So we have, uh, myself as technology director, we have a new data manager, Jacqueline Oreo, um, who's been terrific, a great addition to the team. We have, uh, Jason Cabral over at the high school, who supports the high school, but he's also our network technician, so a lot of the complicated network things. I rely on Jason, and we're really lucky to have him, and he's been a maner for many years. And then we have William Andrade, uh, helps us technician Fowler, also a new addition, who's been great, who's, you know, worked in some various purposes, and he's got some family connections, but, uh, he's terrific, so it's a lot to manage for this team, but, uh, with the exception of the craziest, of the beginning of the year, we managed to do pretty well with this. Uh, some things that we're focused on this year, um, MapPro, which, so you've heard about, it's a new student assessment platform, and we've been helping to manage that, and now we'll be helping to process the data. Analytic View is a new data dashboard we have, uh, which is going to take data from MapPro, Aspen, Lexia, all these different assessment systems. And put it in one place so that teachers and administrators can see information, key information about students, make decisions about the learning and the teaching of those kids, um, rather than having to log into eight different things to grab that kid. Brian mentioned we there, we have sort of a grand vision around internet and, um, live streaming at our athletic complex, but we weren't able to have BIOS ringing internet connection from the street, and they wired it all the way to the, um, concession stand. And that is allowing WAVM to take that feed and run cameras from that spot. We also have very low-grade wireless, not so that the, the, um, staff working at the WAVM at that can communicate. And so we're thinking now about how we can, we don't have the capability to run a public wireless network for a huge crowd. Um, that, I think, will be an important part of discussion around the nature. Uh, CrowdStrike, so antivirus and malware and ransomware is the other, you know, another thing that keeps me up at night. Many districts have been hit by this, and they've either had to pay ransom or lose data. So we've invested in CrowdStrike, which is a, runs on all of our, uh, Windows devices and putting your servers. It is constantly looking for viruses that are out there, making sure they're not infiltrating your system, then if they do see things, automatically shutting them down. And, so that's been in addition, we're upgrading our phone system, uh, we're sort of on the schedule, we'll have that done this year to, uh, to comply with a couple of laws, um, that will allow if, uh, nine-one-one calls placed from a classroom, the dispatch can see exactly when the call is coming, whereas right now, they just sort of get it generic. Working on a five-year technology plan, uh, now that things have settled down post-COVID, it's a good time, and hopefully, you know, about building projects to take stock of where we are and where we're going to be five years from now. In terms of the ways we use technology, um, computer science is going to be a new pathway at, in our high school. Amazing technology teachers across the district. And MHS is a big job, making clear that computer science, uh, is a priority of students who come from Fowler. And we're working on, on improving the website to make it easier to find things, but also paying attention to accessibility, where we are mandated morally as well legally, make sure our website can be read by people on screen readers, um, can be translated, and so we're making sure that we're doing everything we can. Thinking ahead, um, a few areas, one, technology integration, I'd say if there's one area that we need to do more on, um, you know, I think my department spends so much of our time keeping things running and helping with different systems. We need to spend more time working with teachers and actually using technology in the classroom. So, uh, many teachers are doing this already, but, and, you know, we want to make sure it's consistent, that's for us. Uh, more sophisticated use of the data dashboards, we're just building out analytic view, but our hope is that it becomes a real I, you know, would love to see a little more geeky stuff getting into our schools, 3D printing, virtual realities, we have some of that, we have 3D printers here in the high school, and we have some virtual reality goggles here, and so I'd love to see more. Next thing, what is the next cool thing? One possibility is AI, so we need to talk about policies for AI, how we can approach artificial intelligence. Chinese systems, kind of, and um, think about public wifi at the athletic complex. And then, lastly, look at our subscription services. Which tend to increase in price every year, while our budgets tend to stay flat, and so we need to figure out ways to make sure that we're able to keep these options in. And that's it, and I have ten questions.
Um, I do have a couple of questions, but I'll go around the room first, thank you so much, I, um, I'm realizing how much I think we need to have you here anna- annually, so just because there's so much evolving on the technology landscape, I feel that once every three years um, is not enough, so we, we haven't seen you since COVID in our, in our meeting before, so it's, uh, been quite a while. Um, so Mary, I'm gonna, I'll start with you, if you have anything, any questions, feedback?
Yeah, um, I'm thrilled about the, um, the five-year technology plan, because I showed Brian that there was one. It was like the last time, I think it was two thousand eight, bit, so, yeah, really, really excited that, um, that that's coming back into focus, so thank you for that. Um, question, a couple of questions having to do with more outreach, um, and I know we don't get a very big audience, but you know, there's so much about, you know, parents being able to, to check the history of your kids, to make sure, you know, is there any plans, uh, and maybe this will be in the five-year technology claims, that to have opportunities for parents to really learn how to oversee what's going on, you know, with their kids on social media and that. And the flip side of having educating students on, you know, how to be careful with social media and that kind of is that down the road maybe, or?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, well, first thing is, we do have something called Security Home that is on our phone books and generated accounts for all of our parents, and that allows the parent, when the student is on their home network, to, to see what websites When the student is on their home network to s- to see what websites the student has access on the student phone book. Um, and those student grownups are still filtered at home. So it provides us some security there. The other thing that we were just talking about doing, um, I think Chuck found, um. Now there's groups that come in and do present parent presentations on social media, you know, a hybrid one on things to look for, things to look at. The other thing I'm gonna mention is we're trying to, I, I should be on a list there. Reinvigorating the technology uh committee, which is we call the innovative learning committee. And it formed soon after COVID hit and and we had a lot of decisions to make quickly. And so yeah, great parent involvement. We want to. Bring back some parent involvement in that. So. If you come across folks who'd be interested in serving on that group, have them chat to me. We'd love to have them and we'll work on it.
You, um, and the other, I was also, you know, happy to see, because there are some teachers that, you know, like with anybody, um, that, you know, really. Thrive on, you know, what's the newest and the greatest, and greatest and other ones go kicking and screaming. I'd probably be the latter, but. So just to see that, that, you know, one of the long term plans is to, or one of the initiatives is to really start helping the teachers, um, you know, utilize. You know, what's available, hopefully I can use so much, uh, filter it and all that. So, um, and I think the last question that I had was, um. I know during COVID, one of the pieces that was a struggle, and I think you were instrumental in in helping with this. I know you were. Um, because the kids that don't necessarily have internet at home and hotspots and, and all, I mean, what are we doing for? Cause I'm sure that there are still families, um, that don't have access. So. Uh, you know, the availability to do homework or that.
Yeah. So we do provide hotspots to families who need them that are rising hotspots.
So we're still doing that.
We are still doing, man, the challenge is that in Maynard there are, so that relies on the rise of data network, which, you know, the other carrier, same thing. There are some major dead zones in Maynard. You know, including like Maynard Cross, which is unbelievable to me. Amazing, beautiful development and, you know, like I'm trying to use the Dunkin' app to buy a cup of coffee. So, uh, you know, that signal relies on that. One thing that's out there, Comcast has always had an internet essentials program that is very low cost. And then now it's actually free. Uh, you know, if you fill it out, you qualify, they'll reimburse you. I think the cost is. Ten dollars a month or something like that. And it honestly like. It would be good enough for most families. Um. They discover, you know, they want people who really need it to apply for it because they uh, they don't even publicize it.
So is that information that we are making available to families that need it?
We do, yeah. I think that. You know, for some families are not comfortable filling out forms that go along with that. So it's, I think there's. Challenges that we're working.
At least we're offering it.
Yeah.
To do the outreach.
You also still need to enter credit card information to be billed monthly. Uh, so if someone doesn't have a credit card and a bank account, things like that, it could be a little bit difficult. Um, and a qualification you need to have documentation. That for the executive functioning issues could be hard, but the free lunch letter could be used.
And we've written letters from my office as well.
And where do they find out? Is it? In the experience I get at their phone book?
Uh, we have a technology integration on the website and then, um. Yeah, it's an open air newsletter of parents sharing.
Might just think a lot about the free.
Yeah, we can send it with the letters, thanks for the qualified for free lunch and say, here's this program by all that for free lunch. Qualified for internet essential. Here's that, here's that feature.
Yeah, I, yeah, we definitely, I just don't know if those letters, those still work the same way with.
They, they do, they do work the same way. They go automatically once the student, uh, an application is processed. Um, and we basically, there's a template, but we have full capability of changing.
Okay, that's good.
And adding.
Cause really that.
Also, I, I would be, and I know that we added you to the budget process. Um, so to see your presentation about, you know. Like, you know, how, cause I know, you know, at some point you've got, we, we were fortunate to get a good number of phone books through COVID with the S R money. But well, I'm sure that there'll be a rotating situation where we'll have to start rotating and and maybe replacing some. At least that's what we used to have to do.
Yeah, absolutely. We have a, I wanted to make sure this was standard. We have our license later. Excellent.
Excellent. So if that could be maybe incorporated into your budget presentation, if you do. Great. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Thanks. Um, thank you for all of this information. I was curious about you adjusting pretty gradually and tell me your worry about two, which was uh, ransomware. Uh, system in place for that and that that's there. You're just keeping the other end also. Um, and then AI.
Yeah, I guess maybe that's so.
We have a feature about, I mean, I don't know, we don't have, and I couldn't find our players in.
Sure. Oh, it's, there's definitely one. Yes, so I'm not sure. Yeah.
As a, no, it's a concern around student use of it. It's also a concern around the way we teach it. That's the content that we need to teach and you could. Ask AI to do something that can do it. I mean, take something like seventy five percent of computer program person now. Relevant in the world because AI can write the programs for letting. So it's really changing the world. Got away from road instruction for the most part. It's for Sage on the stage. And AI is just one more nudge to say like, there's really not much reason to be doing. Uh, I didn't want to mention the, I didn't put it in there, but we also have. Platform, uh, training platform for cybersecurity, which are our teacher. Training is part of the beginning of the year, training, and they do another one in the middle of the year. It also sends fake phishing emails that as people like them are reminded.
Is the module visible training model?
There's a separate platform, um. It's called No Before. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's something about, you know, the one we have before was.
Uh, just all great, um. Lots of. Good stuff that was planned and that we have been doing. Um, I did want to ask about. Kids that. Been able to like circumvent the. Restrictions in. So. And, uh. Think that it's. My kids that, you know. Being in class and now they're supposed to be doing something, but they. Stuff, the tabs out. You know, but I think it's. A lot of it is, you know, the, the communication, um, teachers to kids, um, but also. Making sure that liquids are safe and stuff. So, uh, I don't know if there's any. Be done or, um. Towards that, you know. Place or, you know, I'm not entirely sure exactly how it's happening. Like they go into one part of like. Through one website, people like go from there and like go to other parts of the internet.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. You can hear about it and no calls for assistance perfectly. And. Well, securely gives a teacher the ability to see what's. The technology department needs to do a better job of training teachers securely. And. Uh, there's just so many new things that are there. So, you know, carving out that time. Open this and stabilize some. Put in this year or next year. Because kids are always gonna find ways to get that. I mean, they are, geez. We can't please, can't lock our man. You know, we have to do it and we have to do the best we can, but there's always gonna be a race to work. And. The best thing to do is just keep an eye on them, either virtually or walking. The other thing I would say is that from ninety nine percent of our kids, the safest technology they use is. Not using it as a parent, finding ways to keep them safe. Find ways to share.
Uh, everybody basically touched on all my questions. One of my requests was going to be get more information about this securely, how parents can do that. Uh, and then also wondering about what sort of level of teachers and instructors can have over children or kids like. A child can receive emails throughout time of the day, they do. Faces that they're specifically having issues. And are you able to go back and like look at history when they believe that they're stranded, it could be a good problem and all that. Do you have a good amount of control?
Yeah, starting with history department, yeah, we absolutely can see it in student phone book, they can. Or anything they do is stored for seven years. As far as, um. Limiting students, we can do that. We, you know, we've come up with age appropriate restrictions. So pre-bell students, um. Can, can email and all, uh, bow students can only email teachers and can email each other, um. And the levels of like goes from. This is a. But if there's a student who's having an issue. Now they're not doing their homework at home because they're on YouTube all night. Parents can let us know and we'll work with them. Or we definitely have teachers, X websites, it's too distracting. Um, can block it or.
I was definitely content about the access to the Xbox for family. Um, is there a way for, you know, people who the internet central don't work? Or, um, and stuff to know that. Are an option like is that based on the counselors just sort of giving me? So going in each now or if that like. Like the education that sort of reach out if something's happening to us.
Yeah, for the most part it's coming for school staff, but we could certainly. Um, yeah, if they have no, yeah, maybe. Yeah, good point. So, uh, Mary, I'm sure there's some school secretaries who really love sending home papers. I guess, uh, they're like, oh, we told you. These are paid for sometimes.
Did you hear from, um, a couple of teachers that I think that on the parents has said they don't get any of their permission? And then they're only one of the tools are back. So I think it's like people who are missing everything.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to work on getting access, but you can. You know, in government. Life.
Would you go back to the Thursday afternoon flyers at my home?
But maybe enough to just like and accept like, what, like one, just laying out things like if you're struggling with access. Here. To try to drop a specific family then. If it's not much, don't go well, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, there are beginning of the year packets, paper packets. I mean, the other thing for us, you know, to discuss with the towns just around. Also in Maynard and, but I think that, well, you know, it's too late now, but it would have been a good time to go to Maynard. Take a billion dollars off this. And let's work with Horizon and the other carriers to find a place where we can put a tower or put something. I think. Not. If you live with that, you know, it's, you don't have. It's what I'm talking. Town.
But thank you. This is really interesting. I can't believe how many things here I'm not touching with focus that really.
All right, I'm gonna warn you. I have a few questions. Um. I'll pick up where Hillary just left off. Uh, it seems like a good transition as far as, um. Securely, um, I know that when that was first implemented, there was a, a good push that went out to families about it and I. You know, had it on my phone since then. Um, I don't know if I've seen a lot of like annual promotion to families like, hey, are you? Do you know this is like, there's, is there a way that we can, um. Maybe create some type of parent handout that that goes out, that talks about. I know securely, these are the parent, like instead of them going to a website, I would want to see like, how are we pushing that out to them? And maybe at the beginning of the year or, um. Something as they prepare what they should expect to do to help with that monitoring, like what is securely? What can you do with it? Like you can actually set rules to turn off the device at your home, you know, separately where you can't use it, you know, at midnight. If you have, if it's connected to your internet. Um. It also shows, you know, things that are flagged. I thought it was very helpful when it was launched and I would, you know, love to see that promoted a lot more. Um. The app also, I know we invested a lot of time into the, the app that was created and for the, for the Maynard and I, I look at it. Um, to see what events, you know, for the different schools and notices, but. I would love to see some type of maybe promoting that like, hey, did you know that there's an app that you can download and that? You can see, you know, on your phone, um, you know, the news for the events, whatever's posted on the website, kind of like pulls all that in. Almost like a technology, family facing technology handout that kind of gets them prepared. At some level, or even, you know, if you wanted to get in, in, into deep, um, you know, different grade levels, what they might expect to hear about, like this grade uses, you know, or these grades use. IXL or, um. You know, certain things that they can just be more familiar because so much is done on the computer nowadays, understandably for education. Um, it would be helpful that they had a tool of what they should expect to hear about or what they, you know, might want to look into a little bit more. So any, any thoughts on like creating something like that for families?
Yeah, I think those are great suggestions and, you know, those beginning of year packets would be a great place to put a technology focused one. And so I.
Um. Yeah, that was just, that was some, just some feedback. Um, I found it always useful, but I don't, I feel like. It hasn't been talked about enough securely in the parent area and, you know. New kids come in, access to computers happen. So that would be helpful to, to share. Um, speaking about the registration packet, I do recall. Years ago, we had talked about when Aspen would be, um, implemented, that the annual registration packet would be. Moved to an online process, like maybe the following year. I don't see that has happened yet. And I'm wondering when we might expect that or what is the, what might hinder that from happening at this point?
No, it, it has happened. Um, it is implemented. So many families use online registration.
So I get, so I, I know that they sent out, maybe I'm gonna make sure we're speaking about the same thing too. So are we talking about like every year you get like? Signing up like this, you know. Whatever the, you know, you, you, your first day of school, um. Things that go home, like you receive the handbook. You know, those kind of things that parents have to attest to every year. Is that, cause I, I know at Fowler, that was paper this year.
I understand what you mean.
Okay. I know that every year sometimes that is, or some places have done that online or, you know, move that to an online process. Is that something that you're? That's being entertained?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, you know, it's a logical next step. I think e-signature is something that we're working out now.
Oh, good.
And, um, so.
Okay. I would love to hear an update on like what, where that is, because I think that was one that I. Was, I've been hoping to see soon because filling out the same thing every year, if you, if a parent, you know, can just go in and. You know, just update whatever might be like, it's your emergency contacts or your address or your email and just cuts down, I think, on the labor of, we have to print, you know, put it into. Pockets and send home to family. I just would love to see if we could prioritize that for next year. I just would love to see if we could prioritize that for next year, if there's, if that's a possibility.
I'm with you a hundred percent.
Okay.
Work on.
I'm sure it's not just you, so I'm take that feedback and um, yeah, it'd be great to hear what the issues with such an implication. Your implementation would, what are, what hinders us from doing that? The other thing I wanted to ask about was the information that. Families have, I know IEP information that Aspen allows families, you, or it has, allows educators to see when there's. A student who has a certain status and, you know, to kind of prepare and review that. But um, I'm hearing that not a lot of the schools don't follow maybe the same process for five oh fours. Which might still also be done in in paper form at some level. I don't know if it's every building or um. Or if it's, you know, however that might be. So I'd be curious to see if we could follow up on what that process is as you're talking about. Educators needing access to email or information about a student and, you know, quit the click view that you're talking about, kind of all going into there. If there's a paper form of some five oh four information for a child, um, you know. I'd be interested in understanding if there's a limitation why that can't be also added into Aspen.
I mean, the the part that I can speak to is that there's a um special education module of Aspen that we don't have. Uh, we, you know, East Fed is kind of the center of our special education universe and. Getting things from you sped into Aspen is an annual process that takes time. I don't really know about the. Five oh four process because it's not from tied in.
Right, I think it's, is it, I think it's principals or either the building leadership own, own that more so and it's, so that's where um. You know, from a family perspective, you know, it is different, but you know, for what I think of, I'm an educator. I just want to make sure I have the information and I I think that the information on a five oh four and IP should be accessible the same way. So it'd be good to just understand. That a little bit. The website, I know you talked about accessibility and where, where does looking at, I didn't know if I, if I, I heard um. Accessibility for our website, how do you, where does that fall in your technology plan or? Map, is that kind of part of that to be developed of one of those tasks?
No, it's really a must have, so it's something I'm at. The website was not made accessible historically, but a lot of. We want to get away from our images of text and PDFs that can't be read on screen readers. And we had a ton of that and and people are used to that. That's kind of like the social media thing, like create an image and you're like writing letters in different fonts. And that you can't do that because a screen reader can't read that text and it can't be translated. So it's going through the website, document by document and getting rid of those PDFs and replacing them with plain text. Which, you know, may not look as fancy, but can actually be read by everybody and it can be translated. The website has right now Spanish and Portuguese translation built into it. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're not putting up content and we're required by law to make sure we're not putting in content. That is not readable.
And I had just two more questions for you. One is you mentioned about the cost of subscriptions going up annually. I know in academia, I deal with certain, and they, they sometimes do exceed three percent. Depending on the platform and the use and licenses, is that what you're seeing in Maynard? I know, I mean, I think our budget, we've been getting like a two point five percent annual budget increase annually. But I don't think that the expenses are are two point five percent from a, do you have a? An idea of if they're. Yeah.
And the, you know, and you definitely put in extra effort to reduce that because for most of these vendors, the, you know, the cost to them. Giving you the subscription is almost nothing. It's just one more switch they flip. So if they say, hey, this is going to cost ten thousand. And you credibly said it and I'm not getting, I'm, you know, the district can't afford it unless it's five thousand. A lot of times they will come down to that or they will leave at the middle of the list. So. We always push back and ask, hey, can you do this? Can you do that to reduce that? And it all depends on like the demand that's out there and, you know, and um, you know, certain. Things are top products that are out there and then they feel like they can charge more, but.
Do um.
I think one of the things we ran into during COVID, we needed to file a technology tools because people were learning remotely. And we were able to use COVID related funds to pay for that and some of those things are now coming to. And we were really digging deep to make sure that we're evaluating them before we review them. Um, in some cases, they're not needed anymore. We learned over time that they weren't the best fit for us, so. Um, you know, one benefit of hitting this, you know, breaking point where we have to make choices through really digging in deep to subscriptions. And we're working back on that.
I know that Chuck um mentioned that as from the curriculum aspect, you know, as far as doing a really good inventory. And um, so I think at some point it'd be great to get that follow up of which ones that we, you know, we are sunsetting, reasons why. Maybe that could be part of like an annual update we get, um, just because it helps us, I think, inform. You know, how we're collecting data, you know, and and also, you know, our, our responsibility being, you know, financial responsibility with. Not carrying things and services that were not really the best fit for, for our district.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Try because, you know, these curricular tools are digital and they're technology, but they're obviously also breaking them. And so we, you know, we work together on those. And they're paid out of my department in some cases out of, you know, curriculum. Sometimes Santa Claus brings us a present too.
I've heard. There's a lot of like friendly like sharing there. So um, is there any, um, actually I lied, I have two more questions. One was, um, is there any training the school committee, you know, might be able to take to help us? I mean, we, we deal on the same, you know, information, we, we have emails. And I know that there's a lot of, we don't necessarily have access to the student data unless whatever is shared with us from a family per se. Um, you know, we may have access to contracts, but some of it might be um. Information, I mean, it's our systems. So I'm wondering like Google, it's our system. Is there anything that we should be trained on? Um, to be aware of, I know that you do great PD with the staff. Um, every year there's some things that they need to be, you know, I think like the phishing, I've seen Colleen's emails, you know, going out. And apparently it flags her as a suspect, um, suspicious person. Sometimes it's overly conservative, but I I think it'll be helpful for us to also get educated on, you know. I I see it in my professional world. I don't know if everyone has that same, you know, insight on how much that high risk data. Um, that, you know, the the firewalls that you talk about and how critical those pieces are. Um, and how, when they go awry, it can, it's, you know, very much a financial impact to an institution.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to help in any way that you guys and so many feel like I can be helpful.
Like those practices, I think maybe so if you, I know in an, in another role, you might be familiar with like, you know, um, you know. Things that we might be best practices from a um, a technology standpoint that we could do. When we have people who turn over, you know, things that we might, you know, a checklist, a membership as they go, things that we could do. It would be a helpful guide for us to um, kind of lead our, you know, inform our, our decision making with technology.
Yeah, no, I'm happy, I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, and my last question, this is for real, is. Do, 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 um, our, our staff who have district issued devices when they bring them home to use them? Are they required to use a VPN? To to log in to access, like, you know, certain applications that are online. I just, I know that's an area of. Vulnerability sometimes, you know, because everyone's hot wifi connection at home is is can be different from a security perspective.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they're not required to use a VPN. The vast majority of our staff are using Chromebooks now as their mobile device. And they're much more safe than a Windows device. Um, and the ones that are on Windows are, you know, have our antivirus installed and fired on there. And the Google accounts themselves are restricted, so. Uh, and and other Windows devices that can't install software, they rely on the, you know, tech department to come install anything, so it's a.
Lockdown.
Yeah, in terms of that. Uh, I mean, honestly, like the thing, you know, I think. Phishing emails, I think are a real concern because they, they send out eight billion of them, you know, the hackers out there and they figure out which ones work, you know, and they're really socially engineered. So it's. Training staff as much as possible. When in doubt, you know, go see somebody face to face or.
Do we, do we use like a single, a single sign on um for the different? Applications that staff might use?
Yeah, I mean, everything is through their Google account, which is single sign on and then Windows, we're using Active Directory, which also limits their ability. When in active directory, it's like a store Windows um application we use that has our, I'm in there. So if somebody stole a laptop and staff members, they wouldn't be able to plug into it.
That's, that's all I, yeah. That's all I have. I just want to thank you very much um for your time and information and um. I think it would be great to have you annually if you're not opposed to such a visit.
I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great. Um, anybody, I think that's it, so.
I just want to say, I think it's still like that, the ones that you send a big phishing email because it's such a different thing between reading about it and seeing them in real life. Do you have a, like a percentage of when you send those out, the percent of?
Well, it's a good thing we have the software, let's put it that way. So now I get a lot of emails from people like, hey, is this safe? Is this safe? And so I wish I'm like, yes, you know, check with me, don't, yeah, the percentage is pretty high.
I've seen, um, I've seen it, um, where I work, they actually have emails that appear to mirror like someone who actually does work at the university. And which is, you know. You know, I I figured it was called, um, but which is the other layer. So it's not just phishing. It's more that, you know, you click on something because it appears that it's coming from a trusted person in your organization. Uh, which is, which is even harder. It's more complex. So it's like, maybe there's like a, you know, a fake Colleen out there. How do we, how do we know that, you know, Colleen hasn't been taken over, you know?
If it's anything financial, we now have a policy, we do not accept it on email. They have to enter office or mail it, um, because we actually have had that happen.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It, that's, that's a vulnerability every place and so. You know, I wouldn't be able to tell virtually, you know, true Colleen from legal.
And I mean, I tell people best practices, get out of that email, email them direct, get a new email and ask them a question.
Yeah, we need to have like a secret word, like, you know, ice cream. If the, if the word isn't included, it's not for me.
Because you never know when somebody's email has been, you know, somebody has guessed their password and so you can't even trust, even if it is a real email from somebody else.
Yeah.
The thing to avoid is financial information.
That high risk stuff and students. Thank you very much.
Just to note that we're thirty minutes over.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. All right, I think we're wrapped up here. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And then I think next will is Allison. Allison, thank you so much for your patience and um. And I know you had a busy day and evening, so I appreciate you joining us tonight. Um, I'll just leave the floor to you to just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your role um on what a day, a week looks like for you in Maynard Public Schools.
Thank you. Yeah, I did have a, a busy day, then I can happily announce that the girls won their soccer game today, so that's. Really good job by them. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm Allison McCann. I'm the School Resource Officer for Maynard Public Schools. I do elementary, middle and high school and my trusty partner Otis, as everybody probably knows. Um, he's great. He's been with me since February. Um, I implemented having a dog with me. Um, as soon as I could, as soon as I realized how positive they can be. And he's made a huge positive impact with a bunch of kids and and staff. Um, but I see a lot of positive impact on a lot of kids that that need him. And something magical about dogs is what I say, they just do something great. So my day to day is a little bit different um every day, kind of depends. Some days I just get to walk through school and say hi to my, my friends, as I call them, all the students at school. Um, and other days I'm running around busy, whether it's chasing after kids at Gray Meadow or. Or um, doing a threat assessment at the high school or doing something at the middle school. It really kind of depends. You know, I'm, I wear many hats in the police department. I'm school resource officer, juvenile detective. I do a bunch of different stuff. Elder affairs have the dog. Um, some of you might have met our mental health clinician, Emily. Her and I work closely together, so she comes into school a lot too, so that's a, another positive thing that I can bring to school. Um, that she has that aspect with her for, because as we know, we have a lot of mental health these days. So it's, it's really great that I'm able to bring her into school with me. And then the nice part about being in the schools is that I'm also outside of the school. So I can bring to school, especially with the guidance counselors, if kids have been having a hard time outside of school. So then they can kind of understand what's causing issues inside a school and vice versa. So it's a really nice relationship that I have with a lot of staff and especially, like I said, guidance counselors to really give these kids. The most that we can give them, because as we know, kids like to pretend like school is so long, but really six hours a day. Thirty hours a week is nothing, so we have a really small window to make a big impact on these kids. And it's important to me that we do make a, a good impact.
Are there any um particular initiatives that um, that you're, are on your radar? I know in the past we've had, you know, SROs working with the high school with programs with um, I think like middle sex youth. Um, you know, what are, what do you, where do you, what does your role fit into those type of programs organized with the school?
So right now, I'm just like, I have Otis, I worked that into there. And then over the summer, when school's out, I do a youth academy. Um, and then right now I'm helping coach the middle school girls soccer. So I try to get involved as much as I can without overloading my plate. I'm not good at not overloading my plate, but I try to, to do anything that I can and help out wherever I can. And if any of the kids come to me with any initiatives, then I'm always all over that. Like I had some high school student council kids come to me and say, we want to do a, a five K and we want to give back to families in need. And I was like, absolutely, like, let's set it up. So really anything that anybody comes to me or if I come up with anything, I have really good support from my command staff. So um, really I get to run with just about anything.
Um, I just want to say thank you. I know Maynard has been pretty, pretty blessed with some amazing SROs. And, you know, you're again up there with that and and so I, I. Um, I'm really appreciative of, of your time and and ability to, you know, what you're able to commit. Um, I know Otis has helped at soccer practices, not so effectively sometimes. I think Otis goes out for the ball a little bit, which I've heard is pretty funny for the girls. So um, but I do thank you for, for really being such an embedded part of our, our, our school community beyond just um, a police officer as well. So I'll, I'm gonna, you know, go ahead and go around to the school committees if they have any questions for you. Uh, Mary?
Um, yeah, just, um, I'm so grateful that we consistently have an SRO and that is Natasha saying. We've, we've been fortunate to, to have great people in that position, um, that positive influence. Um, my, my one question is that I know when Trista was in the role, she would actually go into classrooms and maybe do a lesson plan. Um, especially at the lower grades, because we used to have the D R program centuries ago. Um, and that was really instrumental at the younger grades. Self doing, any of that?
Yeah, I would absolutely do that if um, the teachers wanted to do something like that. Last year I worked with one of the teachers at Green Meadow that I went into each classroom as like a special guest and and read a book. So it's, I'm rather than happy to do that stuff. I called Green Meadow my, my happy place because I love the kids at that age, so absolutely.
So have you talked to the principals about, you know, um, about, you know? So, have you talked to the principals about, you know, um, about, you know? Maybe thinking about things like that versus maybe just having a teacher here or a teacher there, you know, um, approach you?
Yeah, they, I mean, I haven't spoken to the principals about it yet, but I think they kind of leave it up to the teachers if. Whatever fits into their lesson plans, but the teachers are always open, willing to me coming into the classroom, so I'm sure that they would be.
Thank you.
Great, Elizabeth?
Um, just thanks for coming, uh, thanks for everything you're doing, it's great that you not only, that you're taking it so seriously and that you're coming in. Helping with the sports and bringing the dog is so clever, and it's just really great to hear your passion, your love for the kids, and we appreciate you very much, so thanks for being here tonight, also.
Thank you.
Mauro?
Staying here, um, I think it's really, I didn't realize that you were coaching, um, the middle school's. Uh, girls soccer, I think that's a lot of fun. Um, I, did you guys play Bromfield?
No, we played Bromfield yesterday and unfortunately lost, but we played Marlboro today.
I'm too bad about yesterday, I know that the, all the, the JV and um varsity, both boys and girls played Bromfield. And we actually won today, which, um, we have not done very well with, against Bromfield, so that was like a huge. A huge deal, so, but, uh, I'm glad to hear that you guys won, um, and I just really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I have a handful of questions, um, first, I think you're fantastic and all of me to be in, um, particularly great. Um, uh, one of my questions is, how often is Emily available to you? Like, I know she shared with, like, is it like eight or so other communities?
So, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, so Emily has finally, thank God, cut down, um, we got another clinician, so her position is through Elliot. So she's hired through Elliot, but then works with the police department, so she had a bunch of towns, but they finally found another clinician, and she took a bunch of. Emily's workload, so now Emily just works with us in Concord, so. Monday through Friday, she's either in Maynard or she's in Concord, she usually spends Monday, Wednesday, Fridays in Maynard, because we're pretty busy. But if she's not in Maynard, then she's right next door in Concord, and she's readily available, I've called her many times and been like. We really could use you, and she comes right over, so she's available more often than not.
That's really awesome, um, that's wonderful to hear, I knew she was trying to be shared so many different places and overwhelmed. Um, what percentage of your day is spent related to the school? Um, I know you do a ton of things outside of the school, but the police department, um, how, how is that balanced for you?
So it kind of really depends, I wish I could say like my day to day is the same, but it's, it's not, but most of the time I'm spending it. Within the three schools, so, um, during the school year, I try to push off the other stuff, like I said, I am a detective, but. We have another full-time detective, so the other full-time detective takes on as many cases as they can during the school year. So that way I can focus more on the school year and just be with the kids, so I try to spend as much time inside the schools as I can.
Great, um. And then, so the, I know there was the new MOU about a year and a half ago. Um, is that working out well, is it being followed by the schools, is it being followed by your department, is it? Are things going well with those changes and the implementation, or are there changes that you'd like with that?
I missed the first part of what you said, what happened a year and a half ago?
That the D A C often and the state sort of came up with that model MOU that, um. Maynard and the school system signed for the cooperation between the, um, schools and.
Oh yeah, it's been, it's been really good, honestly, um, all the principals, the superintendent, everybody, I work really well with them, the MOU works great. Um, in today's day, you really have to have a, an MOU, um, nobody's allowed in schools like I am unless you have some. Significant training, given the, the police reform, so everything works out really well, I, I think, in, in my eyes, and. So far, so good.
Does there tend to be, um, any sort of like slide towards wanting you to be involved in discipline? Um, that's not in line with that, or is it pretty, those boundaries are pretty set?
Those boundaries are pretty set, the, the principals are aware of, of they, they handle discipline, if anything comes into, like, it's. Threatening to the school's safety, that's where I step in, but if it comes down to like, kids are getting in fights and stuff, that's on the school. That has nothing to do with, with me, I don't handle discipline at the school level, that's not what I'm there for.
That's really great to hear, um, and then my last question is just, is there anything that you would like from us, or you'd like from the schools, or? Um, is there anything that you'd like moving forward to help you do the great job you're doing, or to improve things?
I don't think so, it seems like you guys, um, support me and, and what I do, so really, that's all I ask for is just support, because these days, unfortunately. A lot of schools don't really want SROs, because they think that us being in the schools is trying to get kids in trouble, but. But really, it's the complete opposite, we're trying to help kids, I have some, some problem kids that I brought into my youth academy over this past summer and. And they had a great time, and I just really want to build those relationships, so keeping us in the schools and, and supporting us is really just. What I ask for.
Thank you, and if you need a dog center for Otis during soccer practices, I know someone who would love to do that for you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I actually had, uh, just two more thoughts, just to follow up, one is, what are? Are there any particular trends that you're seeing in schools that are really worrying to you that are either? Um, underfunded or, um, under-resourced in some way? That impact our youth that, you know, just would be great to hear your perspective and to highlight. I know we talk about vaping and that's an ongoing conversation, but, um, is there, you know, other drug use or, or things of that nature that? Really are just, you know, you're seeing a really big concern that are just, we should be really thinking about resources better, um.
Yeah, so obviously vaping is, is a big concern, drugs are not as bad within our school system in, in Maynard, really. Um, I mean, obviously drugs are a scary thing, and with people lacing things and, and pressing pills, these days, it's really scary, but I'm not seeing that in our schools. Um, really, it sounds cliche, but social media has created quite the, the issue for kid. Days, kids cannot communicate with each other appropriately, they are really mean to one another online, they come up with. Terrible ideas when they're looking up things online, just things are so easily accessible at their fingertips that they. It's just such, it's so bad for them, honestly, and I wish that we could do more, but it just keeps coming out. Sometimes kids teach me what different apps are, I'm like, wait, what is that? And they have to tell me what it is, it just flows so, so quickly, it's. Evolving rapidly.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's, that is true, I mean, a, adults don't even know how to behave themselves online, so, on social media, so. Um, so I can see where that relates to, to, to the kids, um, as well, um. Is there, I, I know that, you know, in our house, we talk about certain apps, there are particular apps that you're seeing that, I know that. Really are hard to, like, I know, like Snapchat or things like that on a personal level that really kind of facilitate or. Lend to more bullying opportunities or things, I know they're harder to, to track, that maybe you would advise parents to really reconsider. Um, access to at a certain age?
Yeah, Snapchat is my biggest concern for the most part, because kids think that if they send it, that it disappears, so they think it, it's not gonna follow them. And so, a lot of times, they don't always realize the repercussions that come with it, not last year, but the year before, I did a, a training on, well, like. Kind of a training, more of a seminar with one of the grade levels at Fowler on social media usage and how. A lot of times these kids will type it to one another, but they won't say it to each other's faces, because they know it's mean, but. It's easier for them to type it, and then they don't realize that it's gonna follow them down the road, like, you never know. Where you're going for a job, or what your background's gonna be when you get a job, and what's gonna pop up in the future, so really, just to be nice to one another. Snapchat is my biggest concern on avenues to be able to bully each other, and then TikTok is concerning to me on. The different things that get put up there that are. Persuading kids to do things that they really should not be doing, or wouldn't think of on their own.
It would be really great, um, as you're bringing this up, to have something, I think that what you're talking about, uh, it should probably be an annual thing at Fowler. Um, that's that, that age where they get access to, parents are like, you know, what certain apps, and then there's pressure, like, all my friends have this, and. You know, and so I, I think that would be really great to think about, if we can have an annual type of, you know, reminder, uh, like, it follows you. Um, and then, uh, the other part, if there's anything for parents, like a parent, you know, seminar or some type of education about what you're seeing. What parents can look out for, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, that's a great idea, I should definitely put something together for parents too.
Great, um, that's, that's all I have, anybody else?
I just, I, I just had a follow-up question, Allison, um, talk a little bit about the youth academy that you do in the summer for students.
Oh yes, I love youth academy, so I do one week of youth academy, um, it's completely free to the kids, they get a, a T-shirt. And we, it's Monday through Friday, and each day is something different, I have a bunch of different, uh, departments and agencies. That donate their time to be able to do this stuff, so this past year, we went to Concord District Courthouse, and they got to. Go to court and see what court is like, um, we go to the Boys and Girls Club for one day, it's called Public Safety Day, so. We blend with the Boys and Girls Club, and we do different things, like this past year, the State Police Mounted Unit came out. Fire Department comes out, FEMA comes out, um, just like a bunch of different agencies, the National Guard came this year. With a cool obstacle course, so that was a lot of fun for the kids, um, we do. P T in the morning, so it's kind of like a, a real. Academy, but on a much lower level and not scaring the kids, so kind of getting them moving in physical activity. Is really important, one year we went to Hanscom Air Base, so we do a lot of different fun stuff that all has to do with policing, and then we. Kind of put in, we, um, the past couple of years, we've gone paintballing, so team building, but also fun and. Kind of more police oriented, and then like fingerprinting evidence, motor vehicle stops, the kids always love it, I love it, it's. It's a great week during the summer.
And what age bracket, and is it by imitation only, or how does it work?
So I usually put it out on Facebook a few months before, like on the Maynard Police Department's page, a few months before we're gonna start the. The youth academy, um, it's for like middle school age kids, so it's really whoever signs up kind of first come, first serve, I usually cap it at. Around like twenty kids, because that's kind of what we can hold at the police department and between myself and whoever helps me with it.
Thank you so much for doing that.
All right, um, so Allison, thanks again for, for staying and, and joining us, I really appreciate it, and I know that the school committee really appreciates. All the work that you're doing, and, you know, forming those positive relationships with each student, so, um, get some rest. Do I lose her?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, sorry, um, so get some rest, I know you've had a long day, and congratulations on the win.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Okay, so, um. Moving on superintendent goals, so before, before we jump in here, I know there's been a lot of, I want to just recognize, I know. Brian, you've, you've put together, you've circulated, you've, you've heard some feedback, um, reviewing some of the, the notes that have been. Shared, I think there's still some opportunities, um, you know, to, to tweak further, and so, um. What I'd like to do is just maybe, we can talk about the comments that everyone has about what's in there, um, with what you've shared, and then we can. See if, um, there's anything that we can, uh, amend, you know, that makes them feel like the benchmarks are, are better or clearer. That would be acceptable, and then that will allow us to vote, knowing that. We can still come back and, you know, look at, you know, whatever evidence and those other conversations in the subcommittee, and, and, and tweak some of those things further, does that? Sound like? Something that would work for, for you, Brian, and for everyone?
I'll be honest, at nine o'clock, I don't want to review tonight, I would prefer that you both approve and name edits, I know that there were several comments better.
Okay, so.
Incorporate those in there and have an updated version by Monday, um.
I think the way we can handle it is just approve the goals, and then the benchmarks are for discussion later. Because the best, I mean, the goals are fine, it's the benchmarks that we.
I, I think that's what I was trying to get at, like, how do we approve the goals, right, I think we all have, it's, you know, how do we flush out the benchmark pieces?
That's it, so if you just say the goals are approved, um, my comments are there, you might have seen them already, or you just looked at them. Um, I mean, just to summarize, all they do is, again, I think I keep, I keep trying to make this happen where, for example, the goal is very good. Right now for goal one, for example, um, but in the benchmarks, the benchmarks do not get reflected, you know, the goal is very much about analyzing and measuring data. But there is no mention of data right now, so then, so then where does the data go and how is it used, that's what I'm trying to address in the comments. That I, that I added to the benchmarks. So, so I think, I, I tried to find a logical way that would address the needs of what we discussed, we wanted these goals to do. Um, by adding these parts to the benchmarks, but I think that it, you know. So if you say that the goals are fine, because like we did agree on, I think we all kind of agree that those are the goals that, and you can decide.
In the, the notes that I put, it's more, it's, it's just to actually help you, Brian, because it's, like, there's some things, they're just so. Um, they're, they're just not specific enough that for us to evaluate, we can, so it's more of a, just. Helping us help you and vice versa, so that we've got real designated things to look to, um.
Okay, so, um, oh, Hillary, yeah, I'm sorry.
Get the goals in our strategic meeting, um, and so we are thinking about potentially next week having those, so we can discuss them more. And then bring the benchmarks back up for the next week, after we've talked about this, Brian, if we do that.
I, I think, and we're personnel, we, we actually were just talking about doing that, so I think between the two subcommittees, right? I think we would be able to have those discussions, and then, so, uh, maybe tonight we approve the goals, right? And the benchmarks we recognize are in draft form, but then we will later on approved. The benchmarks along with the goals at a subsequent meeting, is that?
Yeah, um, we should talk more, yes, and the delegation, last year the delegation was the goals was the strategic meetings, and then the overarching. Evaluation was this personnel, that's what we did last year, and I haven't heard of you doing something different, but if you want to talk more about that, we can.
Yeah, it was just like the timing, like in the timeline and all that stuff that we, we ended up doing, and then the, um, the standards, evidence, that kind of stuff. But, okay, so, Brian, does that sound?
Yeah, that sounds.
Okay, all right, um, so I will go ahead and, and make a motion that we approve. The working document for the superintendent goals for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. School year, um. With the expectation that we will revisit the benchmarks and approve those in the next school committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, I, actually, we, I don't, I don't know if this is, we probably should say what they are, uh, I don't think the public. So just, just to, because there, there are a few, so I, Brian, do you wanna? Just read what the goals are, because I don't think this was part of the, the packet for the public, right?
It was.
It was, oh, good, okay. Good, no, I wasn't sure if this was included in, in the packet, so thank you, never mind then, so then everyone had access to what was, um, being discussed then, okay? So we have a motion, a second, um, any other further discussion? Okay, so, um, roll call vote, Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota? Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera, yes, motion carries, and then, so Colleen, we can add this at, um, our next meeting. To do a final, um, approval for the benchmarks. Okay, all right, thank you all for that. Um. And now we're moving on, um, our chairs report, um. I don't really have too much, and Brian talked about the information regarding, um, just participating. I don't really have too much. And Brian talked about the information regarding, um, just participation on the, the bleacher. So you know, hopefully just to send me, you know, whatever feedback you have on that. Um, and that's really it. I haven't heard anything as far as a meeting to regarding the, um, recognition program. So I have not heard how that would be reviewed. I know the deadline is next week to submit those. Brian, have you heard anything about? And follow up? How Greg or the select board are handling that afterwards? Okay, I haven't had, heard any meeting about scheduling something with the chairs, which would be myself and I think Jillian. So you know, if we're not able to meet before, I'm wondering, and I haven't, like, when would I get access to things or you know, any of that stuff? That'll be helpful to understand where we are in that process.
I think last year it was very, very short.
Right, well. Again, I just think of time commitment that, you know, I don't, it's a recognition program and it, it deserves time, sufficient time, you know, to, to go through. So I, I still am of the belief that you know, it should be tabled to annual town meeting, but I also don't want people to feel like we slighted anyone and just in the effort of collaboration, I'm willing to follow the select board's lead and see where that takes us. So, all right, Brian, if you could let me know if there's any update that you hear from Greg as far as what I should be expecting or anything to that nature. So just a couple, the other updates of this, the budget, we're meeting tomorrow. Personnel, I know that we threw out, there was like some emails about us meeting next week as well. So we're gonna kick off our first, um, personnel negotiation subcommittee meeting as well. I think the goal, uh, what we had maybe talk about doing is just getting ahead of like the negotiations and just kind of any housekeeping things that we might wanna prepare for, for that. And then, um, CPAC, I know that CPAC wasn't able to attend the, the high school, um, open house, but they do plan on attending the Green Meadow open house, um, back to school night, tomorrow night. And then, um, also, uh, think Fowler. Uh, I'll check and see who's, it was trying to get some coverage there just to have a presence. And then they do have a meeting scheduled where, uh, Jeff will be in attendance. Uh, so that will be a first meeting in a while that CPAC will be meeting with, Director Ferranti. And they also have started, I think next week is their first like drop in hours for families. They're gonna start next, I think it's the twenty-eighth. Where a CPAC member is just gonna kind of post on public, be available. So if families wanna, you know, ask questions or whatnot. So it doesn't have to be part of a, a meeting. I think it's just another opportunity there. And also CPAC is always recruiting. So I, I know that there's gonna be some push for that as well. Um, the meeting, so the CPAC board meetings are gonna, are, for this year, they're gonna be held during the day, the first Wednesday of each month at noon. So it seems that, um, for the folks who are on it, a better time since they are held virtually anyway to, um, to hold it for an hour. It keeps, you know, keeps it more concise, gets the business. And we could meet more regularly if it's just like an hour at noon, um, during, you know, during a month, if there's a follow up that's needed. And then that's where they were lending just for families in the evening. They can, you know, touch base if evenings are better for families. They can reach out with CPAC and connect for dropping. The CPAC, and so the CPAC actually doesn't have to, is that considered like, you know, a public board anymore? So they're not posted. But I, they would be on the, um, the CPAC, what, like the CPAC website for events, you know, that they're, they're there. So if anyone wanted to, there just isn't, you know, isn't like a record of that, that's capped. It's just more of a discussion. Okay. And I'm sure I'm missing a couple of things. Oh, um, there was some update, Mary. Um, Bob McCarthy, didn't he sent something about marketing?
The major advantage.
Yes, I know, Brian, I think I saw it in your superintendent report. Last, last, uh, for the families that went out, right? There was just a link about just for families to connect with. So, um, that was really great. Thanks for, for kind of pushing that as well. That's all I have. Mary, updates from you?
Uh, no, um, we're gonna have a strategic planning meeting at some point next week. Um, so.
Okay. All right, Elizabeth?
Mary said that part, um, today I went to the DEI committee, the superintendent's DEI committee, um, which gave me some useful places to start. And as Hillary, I'm considering our goals for our subcommittee for DEI, which will hopefully start next week too. Um, and then as I note, um, last year's Marvin, Marvin made that really great spreadsheet about places we could go and signing up for dates of things. It'd be pretty cool to, let's get that back in there. And then we can start planning time to go out.
And I'm, um, yeah, I, I'm finding to do the same ones that I did last year. I don't know if we all want to do the same ones or do different ones, but okay, um, oh, I know I did. So the link, I was actually able for the, our self evaluation. The, the same link that you did, you're thinking, you can now go onto it and actually see the results. I closed it. I just needed to close it behind the scenes. So you can go in there using that same link. I can download a PDF if you want and attach it separately. Um, it's just like twenty or thirty pages. So it's just, you know, I think if we, when we meet, it would be helpful to have like a printout version, but for right now, if you just go into the link to do the form, you can see the online results that came about. And I can, if you don't have that original email, I can recirculate that as well. But I, I didn't realize you could do that. I was like, oh, okay. Um, I didn't have to download a PDF. And then, um, scheduling, so I think we're gonna need to schedule a policy, separate policy meeting, right? I'm thinking that's gonna be in the next week or so. Is that what you guys are needing? Like in two weeks, a separate policy meeting? I think we need to meet, right? There's a whole bunch of policies that we, that were tabled and so wasn't it?
We're gonna need to do our goal.
Well, we need to look at our evaluation, but I figured that maybe we could do a workshop like before that meeting, because it'll be just a policy meeting. And so maybe we can do both that same day. Is that?
Seems like a lot.
Oh, okay. So we want to break it up to have a separate workshop and then a separate policy meeting?
Well, so we actually wanted to talk about the policies. Maro's gonna bring it up on her, um, time, but we wanted to talk about, um, handling the policies differently. We have a really long list that are ready. Uh, I think it was like twenty policies for first read and fifteen for second read.
And then like seven pages of policies that have just been updated by mass. So we can't, there's no way we're gonna get through all of these. We need to somehow do something different, either like a consent agenda or, you know, I mean, we could maybe do a policy or policy meeting for the ones that we already planned on doing, but then I think all the new ones that just recently like back in March and then they just did a few more in this month. That all of those that we had already approved, those need to go through like at the consent agenda. I don't remember it.
I don't know. I never do.
It was not, it was never like this when I was on policy.
So I think they, what they, when they send out, they send out a red line of what, what has changed in the policy, right? So I don't think all the time it's substantial. Some of it is, some of it isn't. So I wonder if it's possible to kind of in the policy subcommittee to take that first go, which ones you feel or like kind of rate them, which were critical. Um, that need to be addressed or like, you know, outdated, there's laws that have changed and which, you know, is that, is that an idea? Like, kind of rate them from like critical to substantive to versus just like housekeeping kind of things than what those other changes are. Cause then we could maybe do a consent agenda on the ones that don't have a lot of substantive changes or aren't
Kind of things to do in that we're still doing the, but don't work with the major policies to the mask policies. And then updating the mask policies as well. Uh, and so one of the things we talked about was as we, we'll go through all of them in depth and look at why masks is recommending the changes and whatnot. But then potentially just putting them in a meeting folder, letting everybody look at them. If there's something huge, like we're totally changing a policy different than mass recommended. If mass recommends it and says, you know, updated to be applied to the MGL, I feel like having it in the folder with a note that says masks that, you know, mask recommended or whatnot, or even the mask document that says, you know, policy update, their document lists why their changes are there. That potentially if people will get those ahead of time for the meeting, come to the meeting and say, I actually have concerns about this one, this one and this one. We could pull those out of the consent agenda. Do the consent agenda to approve all the easy ones. And then treat the other ones separately, sort of like we've done with warrants in the past or minutes in the past.
I would, as one person, I would want you as the subcommittee to kind of take that first pass of what you think are.
Our own way in our subcommittee, but then not have, not talk through each policy. Like if, if we're spending five minutes or ten minutes talking through the policy changes for each policy. And we'll never, like, we can't. Yeah.
Right. So again, without me knowing it, I think I need to see like what you're talking about, like in a document, like these are the ones and then what, what do you recommend doing that consent agenda? Which ones do you think? Like, if you could bring a ma, a recommendation of, of how you're cataloging that, I think that will help me as a one member who's not really deep into.
Everything that we've been doing that first pass, doing the thorough pass in policy. Um, and then just bringing it for approval, sort of like in the budget subcommittee, you do the whole thorough investigation of everything. And if someone has a concern, they'll ask. And we can talk about it like one-on-one or in a meeting. So sort of handling the policies the same way where the subcommittee really delves into it. And then basically just consent agenda approvals in the full meeting, unless there's some issue that it needs to be handled. The same way the budget stuff is handled.
Yeah, I think we might be saying the same thing. But so moving forward, are we saying we don't need a policy meeting then?
It could be, we may need a meeting to do this whole mask one that people like need the success to like work out. You know, work, work it out. But, um, if anything, like only one short one, um, and then or just go right straight and try the consent agenda of these and see how it goes.
Okay, so we do need a, a meeting then. We, is that what we're saying?
Not necessarily.
Oh, man, you guys got it. You're killing me. I just need to know, yes or no? No? Okay, no policy meeting. Is that, is that what I'm hearing now?
That's what we're doing. Now, we're not gonna have a policy meeting. We will figure out, um, ones for a consent agenda and then.
Right, okay. What I ask is your recommendations of why. So as long, if you're able to answer that, like within, like you can come up with, like, this is why we feel this is not, you know, is consent agenda versus, uh, that will help me as a member not, um, to understand, because you would have gone through all that and I won't.
Unless somebody asks to remove a particular.
Oh, no, no, that's not gonna work for me. I'm not gonna assume everything is a consent agenda, because I want to understand that you've looked at it in the subcommittee and you've made that decision that you feel it's a low hanging, low risk for a consent agenda.
Older for the full committee meeting the same way with the warrant, you've dealt, delve into everything in the budget subcommittee. And when it comes to the school committee, like we don't, like, when we do this consent agenda item, if, you know, in a few minutes for the acceptance of the warrants, you're not having to justify that you, you've looked at each warrant. We've looked at them in preparation for the meeting and if we have a concern, we can pull it out. But the assumption is that the subcommittee did due diligence before bringing it forward. The same way we assume you guys have done that review before bringing it forward.
Um, yeah, I don't know if I'm, I don't like to make assumptions there, because I know there's certain times in their past where there have been questions about what, like, what has changed compared to the prior, like a policy, like what is the difference? And I would wanna like hear that from the policy subcommittee as far as, you know.
There's hundreds of policies that we, if we spend five or ten minutes explaining what changed and why, we're gonna get to a state where we shouldn't even hold policy subcommittee meetings anymore, because it's gonna take us so long to just get to the approved. Like, if we're gonna do it, it, it won't work, basically.
All right, let's just get an offline conversation. I don't feel like we're, so right now, moving forward, it sounds like no policy meeting. The ones that we've had first and second readings already, we're not gonna go back and have a policy meeting to approve those? Is that, that's what I'm taking, hearing, right? Because there were a lot, right, Colleen?
Yes, there's like twenty-five.
Right. So are we not feeling that there's, we, we're not gonna have a meeting just for those that we've already had a first and second reading?
There's probably fifteen, first four and four that we need first four and then ten of, um, that, that have been in the policy folder, in the meeting folders over the past, you know, since March.
Talk about a plan for this, we have our goal meeting. So like part of our goal meeting, maybe part of our, literally a goal has to be to figure out what to do about the policy.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the, uh, maybe the, I'm, I'm pooped. Maybe it's just a mental thing to figure it out now. All right. So we'll, we'll prioritize a school committee workshop. Right? About our goals. And then within there, we will talk about what to do about policies. Does that sound like what we'll prioritize as the next meeting? Okay, all right, sounds great. Anything, I know we jumped to policy and we missed anything else for updates?
My only other thing, um, is the childcare at the town meeting. It takes really important that we get that information out soon. Because I'm hearing from parents with kids saying, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to go, I don't have childcare. And so, and I know personally as a parent, like I make my plans like the next two weeks in my head. And if I look at that now or next, about next week, I'll be looking at the week of our town meeting. And if I didn't know there was gonna be childcare, I might think to myself, oh, I can't do that. Not put it on my calendar, not commit to going. And then if I find out it's childcare, I'm looking for, I've already made other plans or I'm not emotionally connected to going. Uh, so I just really want to make sure that information gets out as soon as possible.
Okay, so Mary and Brian, I, I know you guys, at last meeting, you guys were, there was something that was gonna be coming out. Hopefully soon, is that right? With, um, do any? Okay, do you think by the end of the week, we might have some more solid information or no? We need more time?
Honestly, I don't know. I'm, I mean, it's really not something I'd go back to people over as soon as we have it. I would think it's not by the end of this week, definitely by next week.
Okay, where, where is the bottleneck? Or the uncertainty, if maybe that's a better word?
And we're asking late in the middle of their law sports season and their academics and that's.
Okay, is the, is the, um,
In your WABM that night, so it's a small group that were.
Got it. So it's bandwidth.
Yeah, yeah.
Bandwidth and availability. No, no, that's real. I just want to understand if it's more of just the lack, you know, um, I didn't know, I didn't know what, what, where the issues were, so.
I just don't want, I don't have an answer on how to figure it out sitting here right now, but we will have.
Okay, so maybe, yeah, so maybe if you could just give us an update at, at the end of the, for us in your memo over the end of the week, like what, what we have so far and then what we're still waiting for, that might be helpful.
And I do, I have, um, families that have been asking, so we are trying to address it, so.
Yeah, I act, well, so I know my, my, I mean, I know that there's babysitters out there who have, who were actually booked for that night, um, for families. But I, I wonder if it would have been a better option that those babysitters would have come for the school and then, you know, you care for more kids. Come for the school and then, you know, you care for more kids versus just like one kid. Um, but I I think that's also part of the issue as well.
It's a family decision though, so.
It is. No, it, no, it absolutely is. It is hard. Um, so. Would it be possible, I'm just thinking, like, totally out of that, the Boys and Girls Club, we might have like a late night. Um, I don't know. I know they, they, you do this like a parent night out, you know, kind of thing. And sometimes we've had that. Is that a possibility that we could, are there any resources there that we can try to leverage? Yeah, they used to do those parent night out kind of things, or you could just register and they would serve pizza and whatever.
Um, this week or next week, um, for middle school and up kids, there's a movie night with pizza and such. Um, so trying to start working for older kids.
Great, okay, maybe that's an opportunity we can think about. Um, all right, any other updates from anyone else? No? Okay, oh, and I did wanna acknowledge, I know that, um, Mike, Maria, he, he joined a recreation committee meeting. Um, last week, Hillary, you and I went. And so it was good feedback that we got. Um, I did, you know, mention, and I think they were gonna be considering of how to bring that to a more o- online format. To facilitate better participation from, you know, Brian, from you, or whoever from the school. Um, so that was discussed and, um, a point was made for that. And I think the takeaways are, um. You know, how do we get a report that is able to, for the layperson, I know Colleen, you and, you and Wayne have been working on this. About expenses that are coming in related to fields and, you know, what's going out, that kind of thing. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that's still in the works. Um, the priorities that they wanna look at for the recreation committee. Is how to catalog all the fields and how scheduling around the whole town. That might be possible. Um. I had, I'll circulate, I had asked a couple of questions to to Mike and follow up, because I wanted to see if he would join our meeting. For the budget subcommittee meeting, but he's not. But I'll circulate some of the feedback he, he had to share, um, about. About the attendance there as well. So just a, thank you and Brian, um. Thanks for helping with getting the reports and Colleen, you and Wayne as well. All right, um, moving on, I think now we have the consent agenda. So we have no minutes, um, to approve tonight, but we do have three warrants that were approved. That we're, um, going to accept. So without objection, I will accept warrant twenty-four zero one one. Twenty-four zero one two, twenty-four zero one three. No objection. All right, warrants accepted. And that's a wrap, folks. So. I will make a, oh, wait, we, oh, have the, oh, forgot executive session, man. Man, oh, man, all right, I just closed my agenda too. Holy moly. All right. Yeah, bye, Joe. All right, here we go. Let me read this verbiage. Um, so now the school committee will move to into executive session under MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss collective bargaining on MIO with teachers' union. Um, the MEA, since an open meeting can have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chairs or declares. As you declare, the committee does not intend to return to open session. So we will enter into roll call to executive session, Mary Branley. Elizabeth Albota? Mara Hogan?
Yeah.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yeah.
Natasha Rivera? Yes.